I reconvene. I will ask the clerk to call, roll call a second time as we have two council members that are on the phone line. I will also have our borough attorney explain that process.
Good evening. I'll call the roll. Mayor Connolly?
Here.
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Here.
Mr. Catalinello?
Here.
Mr. Landrigan?
Here.
Mrs. Vitale? Mrs. Vitale?
Here.
Ms. Bailey?
Here.
And Mr. Wolkowitz?
Here.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I've got my greetings to the public. Then we will get to the, actually since we have, we'll take the minutes and then greetings to the public and then we will be discussing and passing resolutions or vote on resolutions related to the bond issue. So with the minutes for approval, may I have a motion for the minutes of, executive minutes of May 13th, 2013?
So moved.
I second that with, that's with amendment?
Yes. Roll call.
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Motion for the regular minutes of May 13th, 2013.
So moved.
Second as amended?
Any other, this is regular minutes, any other discussion on the regular minutes 13th? Roll call, vote.
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
All right, motion for the executive minutes of May 29th, 2013.
So moved.
Second as amended?
Roll call, vote.
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
And motion for the regular minutes of May 29th, 2013.
So moved.
Second as amended?
Any other discussion on the regular minutes? Okay, roll call, vote.
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Motion for executive minutes of June 10th, 2013.
So moved.
Second as amended?
And roll call, vote.
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
And Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
And a motion for the regular minutes of June 10th, 2013.
So moved.
Second as amended?
Any other discussion on the regular minutes? Roll call, vote.
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
All right, now we have a, to clean up our records, the February 16th, 2012 executive committee, executive meeting minutes were not approved last year. To clarify, all council members may vote for this whether you were on the council or at the meeting as you are just approving these to be entered in the record and unless there's any major changes, you are allowed to vote. So a motion to approve the executive minute, minutes of February 16th, 2012.
I move that.
Second.
Roll call, vote.
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
All right, now I will do my, now to the greetings to the public, welcome. And we survived the heat wave of last week. I want to commend all the patients and the residents of Madison, the, all, everyone for the Borough of Madison had to work outside through that, that week. Our electric crew for keeping everything running and also including working closely with office building on Geraldine Farms and helping them get back online when their transformer went, was their own equipment, but cooperation that you probably never have in a large utility, they were able to come back online sooner. And a thanks to the DDC who thought it'd be nice to serve or give, gives attendance to the, our employees out there working in the heat to buy some iced tea last week to help survive. And it's a little bit better, but this high humidity is still, we're not through it yet. Employee of the month, right here in our presence, Jim Sanderson of the IT department, efforts securing a 10-year license from the FCC to operate a low wattage, wattage emergency radio station. This will be valuable during significant emergencies and weather events for us to communicate everything to our residents. And this range of the station will allow us to assist neighboring towns for emergency information. One of the lessons we certainly came from Hurricane Sandy, there is not a single method to communicate, you have to do it as many different ways. So whether it's reverse 911, email messages, Nixle alerts, and now an AM radio station will help do, us communicate everything that's going on. Also want to thank the Morris Township Administrator, Tim Gordon, for graciously sharing Lisa Barado, who is on our, she's our tax assessor, but she's there three days a week and here two days a week. And with all the extra calls to the tax assessor's office, they were very happy and understanding to allow Lisa to spend some extra days here. And I believe this is the first council meeting since the big news went out that Geraldine is staying. And through work with many, Ostry who has worked with many county grant applications, working closely with the chief and all our volunteers and all those who donated because without a matching grant, we would not even have had a chance. That Geraldine, our fire truck, the errands fox who's been sitting in the bay as we tried to raise money, will be staying here. And I want to thank the historic trust and the freeholders for approving this. You know, it's a little bit outside the norm when they approve a historic preservation for something that moves around, but they recognize the value that Geraldine represented to the history of Madison, to the education of our children, and as a tool for, to recruit future volunteers. Let me just move on down below here. All right, hopefully people have been seeing the announcements and in the online news and the paper, but this Wednesday at 5:00 at Dodge Field, we've got a great softball game. And I want to call up Caitlin McHugh, who is one of the National Quest Cares captains. And I hear the Quest team has been practicing three times a day for the last four weeks at least. So Caitlin, why don't you come up here today?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Caitlin McHugh, as Mayor Connolly mentioned, and I'm here to invite you all, if you haven't seen our flyers or the inserts in the electric bill, to come to our charity softball game. It's our fifth annual one. It will be on Wednesday at Dodge Field. And as you all probably know, it's the first time that our CEO, Steve Ruskowski, and our employees will be taking on this man right here and his fine team of borough volunteers. So we're really looking forward to it and we hope you'll come out and support the mayor and more importantly, support us and obviously help us raise money for the two amazing benefiting organizations this year, which are the American Cancer Society and Project Community Pride. And before I present Mayor Connolly with his captain's t-shirt, I also just want to thank all of the citizens and the vendors and the businesses in Madison, your enthusiasm and passion and willingness to support not just American Cancer Society, but Project Community Pride and the way you've reached back out to us as a corporation in your community to share how that specific organization has touched your lives has really inspired us. So we hope you'll come out and support some more and we'll see you on Wednesday.
Well, team rights, it will be lots of fun and, you know, I think there's a few people here in the audience that should be part of the borough to play the game, so come and join us. A week ago Saturday was a very special day in downtown Madison. For one thing, it was opportunity to buy coffee at the same price that it was in 1928 if you had gone to Central Lunch, where they celebrated their 85th anniversary. Joe DiBiase's parents opened that up in, on July 13th, 1928, and he has been running it since 1982, which is about when I started going there, when his parents were still working and still alive, they lived well into their 90s. And it is one of the treasures of Madison. I won't read the whole proclamation. He prefers, you know, he's there at the crack of dawn opening place up, so I couldn't get him to come to council meeting, but I will presenting, be presenting this proclamation to him. But it recognizes the fact that this is the longest running business, retail business in Madison for 85 years, that his father Carmine opened it up and served such delights as Klondike sandwiches, which is nothing like the ice cream you buy. And I wouldn't recommend it on a daily basis, it's not the most healthy one, but it is a great sandwich. The customers really treasure the conversations that go on there. I often say that's one of the places I go to when I really want to find out what has happened in Madison, because not only will they tell you, but they'll be very honest and won't hold anything back. And that's always important. He does treat his customers like family. And he had a couple of special customers over the years, including Mr. and Mrs. Phil Rizzuto. Holy cow! And had John F. Kennedy Jr., who was in town to have his Carmen Gia looked at, came by and ordered a Klondike, added tomato and lettuce, and now you can order the JFK Junior Klondike. And Joe is a bell yelled high school graduate, Navy veteran, lives in a home built by his father, and he is truly someone that makes Madison special. So I will be presenting, be presenting this to him this week, recognizing 85th anniversary. So a special day, stop by and offer Joe congratulations. And is William Del Rimple up here? Please step forward. William is a great friend for Madison, became a great friend of Martin Heller, is in the audience, part of our chief executive council members and very instrumental in our partnership with Union Beach. And you're one of those people that has really truly made a difference in Union Beach. So we have a proclamation for you. Whereas on October 29th, 2012, Superstand, Superstorm Sandy hit the Northeast slamming into New Jersey with up to 80 mile per hour winds, unprecedented 13-foot surge of seawater causing massive destruction. And whereas the town of Union Beach, whose blue collar residents live in a town year round, devastated when the storm destroyed 200 homes, caused severe flood damage to most of remaining homes. And whereas the municipality of Union Beach lost 14 police cars, three ambulances and four fire trucks. And whereas in November 2012, the mayor and council decided to assist in the restoration of Union Beach, a town which is located less than 45 minutes from Borough of Madison. And whereas a step towards rebuilding and repairing damaged homes involved contacting Home Depot located in Foxhole, New Jersey. And whereas store manager William Del Rimple efficiently coordinated the effort and Home Depot discounted building materials such as sheet rock, plywood, two-by-fours, generously donating flooring and light fixtures to support the rebuilding of Union Beach. Now therefore I, Robert H. Connolly, the mayor of Borough of Madison, on behalf of the governing body, do hereby extend thanks and appreciation to William Del Rimple and Home Depot for your support, efforts and commitment to helping Union Beach get the feet back on the ground. So much for your, thank you so much for your effort.
This, this is, this is a great token of your appreciation, but I'll tell you, my hat's off to the township of Madison here. Mr. Heller came to me one Saturday morning and to see what we could do, but this township has opened up its arms and its, its resources to help this town. And if anybody has ever been down to Union Beach, you could not believe the devastation down there. And it's a small thing that the Home Depot did for the township, but you guys were unbelievable. So my hat's off to you and I appreciate it and thank you, Mr. Heller.
Thank you very much. And before I go back, I want to just share a couple of other stories related to Union Beach. This, again, this partnership has been incredible with everyone stepping forward, such as Martin, such as William, making it, making a difference. The, we have set a model working with Union Beach that is, hopefully can be replicated in the future, where not only donating dollars, but getting feet on the ground, being able to deliver the lumber, because they just couldn't, it was overwhelming. And if you were in that town days after it, you would have just said, how can they survive? And it's through the help of people like William that happened. But one of the extra initiatives that we did, working with volunteers, is to give the children of Union Beach the opportunity of camp. Can you imagine if back in late October, the storm hits, after the storm ends, maybe your house is gone, maybe it's flooded, but for most, almost every child in Union Beach, they're out of their homes for a while. Every child that went to school was out of their school, went to three different schools through the year. Their life was turned upside down. And in order to deliver a level of normalcy through donors generosity and the cooperation of three camps, put together camperships, sending children to summer camp without a cost to any of the Union Beach families. And one of the things we also gave them was postcards stamped and they sent back some notes. So here's some quick, couple of quick ones. So far, so good. I'm having a great time. Made two new friends. Camp is awesome. Love Christina. Another one, thank you for allowing my friends and I to be members of Frost Valley's first session. The activities here are great. So far we went rock climbing, swimming, boating, saw fireworks, had some moors and tons more. It was raining for the few, first few days, but the scenery is beautiful. Thank you so much for this opportunity. Carissa?
Dear Madison family, thank you for sending me to camp. I've had an amazing time. Another one, I would love, I would like to tell you a camp story. The other day, my camps, camp friends and I went climbing at Frost Valley on the Y Tower. I made it almost all the way to the top of the rock wall. I just couldn't get past that bump in the wall, but I was the person who climbed the highest.
Here's a nice short one. Thanks a lot for paying for my camp. And PS, I'm learning lots of stuff. Thank you for sending me to this amazing camp. It's been an awesome experience. I've met a lot of new friends, learned new things. Thank you for this experience. I'm taking wood shop, which is really fun, and soccer and water sports. They're really lots of fun because I'm thankful that you sent me here. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And here's Robert who wrote postcards just like I did. Dear friends, comics. I guess he needed some comic books, but that was it. And last one, thank you so much for everything you've done for us. I arrived at camp on June 30th. All of our activities have been awesome. I use your donated items constantly, the towels I use for the lake, I use my water bottle all the time. Thank you. So thank you to all of Madison have made this possible, have changed the lives of these poor people in Union Beach as they put their lives back together again. Thank you. And I forgot, since we have in the audience, one of the key donors to our campership program was the Quest Cares program, our lead donor. So thank you. All right, now we will move on to the bond discussion. Okay, we have four resolutions and we can explain the, the bonds and everything we'll be issuing. Sure.
Excuse me, Mayor, point of order. Will there be a time for public comment on this?
Um...
Wouldn't it be typical before we borrow $3 million?
Certainly since we do, we do, we do give the public opportunity to comment on resolutions, yes, so we will allow that. Thank you.
Okay, okay. There are three resolutions, actually four resolutions concerning the upcoming planned bond issue. The borough is planning on issuing 4,151,000 of bonds in two series. Basically both of these series of bonds involve the recreation complex. The first series of bonds went, funded the property acquisition. The second series of bonds funds the construction of the athletic, the athletic fields at the complex. We've, these projects have already been paid for and constructed. We've been in short-term borrowing up to this point. The plan is to issue two series of bonds to finance these projects. One series for the land purchase will be, will have a 20-year maturity schedule. The series of bonds for the turf fields will have a 15-year maturity schedule. These resolutions set forth the maturity schedules for the bonds, the payment dates, the forms of the bonds, they authorize the advertisement of the sale of the bonds and determine various other matters.
Council discussion or questions?
So we go before the public?
Yes. Rob?
Thank you. So I appreciate bond council changing the numbers on such, such short notice. I've been doing a little bit of research though, and my question is regarding the series B bonds, why will we be going out to borrow money when I believe we have already appropriated money and moved it to capital in the amount of a million dollars after the sale of Cook Avenue building in 2007? Why wouldn't we just use that money as opposed to borrowing?
That, that actually was never appropriated. It was never encumbered.
But it was still moved to general capital?
It's, it's a, there's money in, there was money, the pledge of the council at the time is, to give quick history, and since I was sitting on the council at the time, there was a proposal that used the sale of Cook Avenue, or Central, rather 22 Central, which was a former health department building, is now the location for the firehouse apartments, to sell that and use the proceeds to the, to fund improvements to a field that was not designated as to any particular location. I believe at the time, we did not even own the 49 acres. So it was to be used for potential turf field development somewhere in the borough. In my recollection of that meeting, I suggested one is the council should not pledge the sale of the building directly to the support of the turf fields, but should at least make sure the sale of the building goes into capital and, and make a pledge to support the turf field project with a million dollars. And my thought process at the time was if those people that have been following Madison for quite a while, the, when the Borough of Madison purchased the Civic Center location where we have our current health department and the senior center, the promise was to sell that building and, and Maple to pay for the, for that. And so it was a previous council promising to sell it and it, a couple of things that never followed through. And it just reinforces the idea that a sitting council cannot encumber a future council on decisions, because we know that as process goes through, all of a sudden, what was a top priority, and we certainly made the turf field a top priority, may change as pump stations go bad, as roads need to be taken care of. So priorities and capital dollars can be changed. And the advantage here is by using the million, the sale of the Central Avenue property, we were able to put money into capital to take care of these other projects and through Open Space Fund that which was created, which helped us buy the property, we have a method of paying off these bonds, which was probably easier to do than it had we bonded the North Street pump station improvements. So it gave us more flexibility. So that's a little history on that.
Right, but if I just read from the minutes, Mr. Connolly moved to dedicate $1 million in the 2008 capital budget from the sale of 24 Central Avenue for general capital purposes. Ms. Bailey seconded the motion. Mayor Kirkis Law asked for public comment regarding the stated motion. The following individual spoke. Eno Covielo detailed comments. Roll call vote was recorded. All yays, no nays. Mr. Connolly moved that the capital budget for 2008 reflect funding for turf fields or fields. The motion was seconded by Mrs. Holden and passed with the following roll call vote. All yays and one nay, five to one. Now I, I fully appreciate the fact that capital budgets change, but if I'm not mistaken, we have in excess of one and a half million dollars or so fund balance at our disposal that we can use. And fund balance, as everyone knows, is the, is monies that we've already borrowed for capital projects that are then returned to the treasury in case of the cancellation of a capital project or if it comes in under budget. So my only question is, now I see this 221-2013 as a fulfillment of this pledge. I'm just asking why we're borrowing again when we're sitting on a bunch of borrowed money already? So it's like we have taken a cash advance from a credit card that we have sitting in the bank at a lower interest rate than what we're paying, and yet we're going to go out and, as opposed to using that to pay for this, we're going to borrow fresh money to pay for it. So my, so I'm not saying we're not following through on promises, I think we are. I'm just asking why we were deciding to borrow more as opposed to using this money that we already have?
I think, and we can get support or background from others, but the, I think again, as I mentioned, it gives the flexibility of, because this is not the end-all of capital projects. We know that the capitalist far exceeds the ability of the borough to, to cover the deeds, that we do have a ability to fund this in a reasonable method. The, currently the bond rates are still very reasonable, so the ability to take care of the turf fields and also the ability to take care of other major capital projects that are still looming.
But if we have the money and fund balance, it's not currently designated for any use in the near term?
Well, it might be for the joint meeting.
So we have a, a bigger pardon, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
There are other, yeah, it certainly is not designated, but it provides that opportunity that it could be designated for other purposes. It's, it's avail, yeah.
Right, but I, I understand. But if we have the money, why wouldn't we use it?
Probably, I think part of the discussion that got us here to begin with is the fact that, one, we have a very, what's still favorable bond market, so if we use that money today and then had to borrow for another project a year from now, the results could be very different.
Right, it could, the interest could be higher, it could be lower, we don't know.
Yeah, right.
So either to say they would be higher is just as incorrect as to say they would be lower. So all I'm suggesting is that as opposed to going out and asking the, the taxpayer to take on additional debt, don't forget we raised taxes this year, we raised the open space tax. If we have the money, why don't we use it? To me, that, that seems to be the, I understand there's other capital projects, but I'd like to ask that.
Ostry and then Jeanie.
Okay, I disagree with you. I think in 2003, that open space referendum was passed overwhelmingly by the residents and it was primarily for recreation. So the first thing we did, we hadn't, we needed the land, and you're not quibbling with that bond, I understand, but now we have the turf fields to pay.
I'm not quibbling with any bond, I'm just asking what, how we're going to pay for the obligation.
Okay, the turf fields can be paid through open space funding. If we... Okay, the turf fields can be paid through open space funding. If we need improvements, capital improvements to, say, the joint meeting of the sewage treatment plant, which we know is coming on the horizon, and we may not get an infrastructure grant, we are going to be, the borough is going to be on the hook for that. That can't come out of open space funding. So we have a source of funding that people have agreed to, that have supported it, to support the turf fields that they, they obviously wanted.
Yes.
And has made a major difference in Madison.
Absolutely, that's why I voted for it.
So, so my concern is, you take that from, money from the general fund, you're not going to be able to fund capital projects as they come up, and we've seen that. That's why we never dedicated it and encumbered it in the first place back then. I did the agenda recommendation for that one, to say that we shouldn't encumber it, that we should, we should set the $1 million aside. And it was Bob that said, no, that is not good planning.
But then why did he vote yes? To, to put it towards turf fields?
The, the, well, let's, let's not, we want to...
He said that we won in 2008.
Okay, let's, let's avoid the back and forth. Jeanie, you were, you were next.
Will you finish?
Yeah, I'm finished.
Okay, I just want to say that, you know, this is, this is very similar to our own personal finance, right? If you have money sitting in the bank, will you go out and borrow more money, just in case that you have some future use, right? So if we apply that philosophy to this case, we certainly have money sitting in the bank. If I remember correctly, it's a lot more than 1.5 million, it's more like 1.9 million dollars sitting in the bank since 2010. I remember that very clearly, because I was the one who made the recommendation for us to clean up all the ordinances and scoop up all the money that we had borrowed and put it in this one account. And that money has been sitting there for the past two, three years. So we're talking about 1.9 million dollars being there, and yet we're discussing going out to borrow additional money. We're not talking about exhausting the entire 1.9 million. I think what Robbie is saying is, take half of that, which is $1 million, so we don't have, well, we can borrow $1 million less this time go around. To me, that makes good financial sense. And also, I think we're, for the past many years, as long as I've been on council, we always talk about paying for the fields as a three-way partnership. The Board of Education, MAF, and the borough. This is making good on our promise to put that $1 million to good use, to something that everyone's been enjoying since the, the turf field has, has been completed. Thank you.
Bob?
I have a question first, and I'll direct it to Jeanie. About a year or maybe two ago, you wanted to use the fund balance to repave, was it Green Avenue? So clearly, the thought process there is, if the money is sitting in capital, which it is right now, you would want to use it for a capital project. And there are a lot more capital projects coming down the road, which Councilman Catalonello has accurately pointed out need to be done. The pump stations, if we were to do them all, we don't have enough money sitting in fund balance to do all the capital projects right now. We've talked about that capital needs to be funded. I remember when the discussions about the turf fields came up, we said that they were being purchased, I believe, with open space funding. The thought process was to pay them back with user fees and then fund the repayment through open space. To me, you set your priorities and you do it the right way. If you have it, you're just going to, you don't want to start taking from one pocket to pay another pocket. If the, if you have designated money to do capital projects, which is what fund balance is, that's what you use it for. And if you have money dedicated to pay for the, for the fields, which was supposed to be open space, from what I remember, then that's what you do.
Okay, Rob, and then we'll allow the remote ones to...
I do, I absolutely agree with everything that Bob has said. Just one clarification. For the pump stations in town, we have encumbered money. So my first year on council, you know, we did all that work, and we went out and we encumbered funds for Treadwell, pardon, North Street and the, I'm sorry, West End.
Candlewood.
And Candlewood. So we, we, I, I think we were very responsible in doing that. As it pertains to fund balance, it's, you know, it's the money that's left over from capital projects. Now, I, I'm just looking, I, I see that we, that, that the council in 2000 and, on October 10th, 2007, October, yeah, you know, voted to do this. So in researching it, here's a way for the, the council to live up to its commitment, okay, and for us not to, to utilize funds that are currently sitting idle. Now, yes, we definitely have capital projects going forward, but there are revenue streams about to take, you know, potentially about to take on. There's a whole, predicting the future is, is an improbable thing. Since the money is, isn't currently being used for anything, and we have this previous commitment, all I'm asking is, doesn't it make more sense to use money that we have as opposed to going out and reborrowing, and borrowing again, in an effort to lower the potential liability for the taxpayer? So that's, 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 that's my question. And that's, and if so, you know, the, it leaves a lot more money in open space, right? Because recall that we, we increased the amount of hard dollars we're taking in for open space, because we wanted to have a conservative push-in around the, around the debt payment, because we didn't know what was going to happen to interest rates in the future. So if in fact, we reduce this to essentially $200,000, practically no money from open space will be used to pay for the turf fields. It will still go to pay for the purchase of the, of the land, and then next year, we can have a very constructive debate over what to do with the open space money. If we think we are collecting too much in open space and we're a little late in capital, perhaps we can reduce the open space tax and increase what we put into capital. So, so there's all sorts of flexibility here. And my, my, my only point is that, you know, we, we have this money sitting there. I hope that it goes for capital and not the plug holes in operating. And if someone could sit here and tell me that they're going to guarantee that in the future, none of that money will be used for operating, then maybe, then maybe I, I could see a little bit different. But I don't think we're going to be able to get that pledge. So it's hard to make the argument that we can't use this money to pay for the fields, if in fact, we may be using fund balance in the future to pay out rate.
Okay, we'll go to Ostry, and then I want to give our remote council members a chance if they do want to comment.
Mr. Capitalonello, you sat at the same meeting I did at the joint sewage treatment meeting last week.
Yes.
And, and you heard that in 2014, we're going to have to pay big dollars in capital.
Potentially big dollars, we don't know what it's going to be yet.
Right, but the infrastructure loan that we're going to apply for is not a guarantee. And then they were talking about bonding.
Yes.
Right now, bonding rates are pretty low.
Yes.
So I'd rather take my chances today on bonding for this project and making sure that we have that fund available for capital if the bonding rates are going to go up high next year.
We, we don't know if they're going to go up high. If we did, we wouldn't be working...
Well, I know, there are a lot of ifs here. Your discussion has a lot of ifs, too.
We'd be on a beach trading in Miami, right? So, you know, we don't, we don't know what's going to happen next year, that's my whole point. And, and we don't even know how much we're going to need to borrow next year. And in fact, we may get a big portion of it as a 0% loan, so we don't know.
Right.
So to talk about what might happen next year, I don't know. I'm talking about what's going to happen this year.
And then that's...
And I, and I don't want to see this money used for operating, when we can use it for, to, to, to take care of this, and then next year somehow address our true capital needs, okay, and maybe rejigger the open space balance, capital balance, and have a constructive, a really constructive discussion on the taxation policy in the borough of Madison.
Okay, I just, Ms. Vitale or Mr. Wilkowitz, do you, do you want to comment on anything before I...
Uh, yes, I do. I unfortunately have a connection that isn't very good, and, and so I need a clarification. I understand that Councilman Catalonello, in lieu of issuing bonds, would prefer to pay for the fields through what source? I couldn't hear that.
Fund balance, Ben. There's approximately $2 million there in fund balance.
Capital.
Want to draw down fund balance to pay for the fields?
Yes, and I think it's a misunderstanding about the various parts. The fund, capital fund balance came from the designation of a project that we had done to issue a bond financing for the elementary public project that probably went back to 2009. Our attorney at the time is not able to secure the easement for private property owners to allow us to perpetuate the project. When that happens, that ordinance is canceled, or funds are turned to a pot called general capital, a general fund balance. That's different from appropriation ordinances. When we finish a project, then there's a balance of projects completed out of budget.
Right.
Then those funds go back, so to the funding source. So general capital, go back to general capital, including funding. Water capital, go back to water capital. Electric utility, go back to electric capital. Totally different project. That's the funding part. It happens, and then we move to...
I apologize for my confusion there.
No, it's, it's just kind of clarified. I mean, it's just, we've got time, right? It's a, we've got, it's a, it's a schedule to be received, and I want to say, it's to have, it's enhancing the law, and I want to review it. And when we started this process in June, and Patrick needed a bond capital, and our first time this issue of the basis connects, after six months of such a good bond capital, unusual, I would raise our public forum, for any opportunity, for six months, the bond capital is not the pressure of a bond over the last month.
Hey, Ben, do you want to, now that you had that clarified, any other comment?
No, except I'll just second what Mr. Cody just said. I mean, we've been at this for a while, and this is no surprise. And I don't understand why this is coming up now. The validity of it, I don't even care to argue, but the timing of it is, I mean, it's confounding. And this is not a situation where we can take a deep breath and wait another month. Either we're in the market or we're not in the market, and that's why we began talking about this six months ago.
Okay, and Ms. Vitale, would you like to comment or have any questions?
Thank, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I had a little bad connection here as well, but listening to Ben, which is much clearer, really kind of put it in perspective, I think, at this point. Yeah, I absolutely agree with Ben. We've been talking about this for a long while. I've spent a lot of time thinking about this and, you know, talking to who I felt was necessary for me to, to know how I should vote on this particular bond issue. So, you know, I agree with, with Ben, yeah. This has been ongoing for a while. I'm not in favor of, you know, bringing down any fund balance at this point, especially since we're going to probably be thinking about lots of other, other improvements in other areas as well, that we might need some money. But that's about what I have to say at this point.
Rob and then Bob?
So, we're not talking about the validity of being in the market. There's no, there's no debate at all over borrowing mon, you know, the Series A bonds. The Series B bonds, you know, it, it seems as though, you know, other groups have made commitments they're living up to. I'm clearly reading the minutes incorrectly, because it looks to me like the council made a commitment. So, not to mention the fact that, it, what, what to me was confounding was that we had historically rolled the bond anticipation notes one year, yet in this instance, we decided to do it for, for six months. So this is a problem of our own making, and I apologize if I'm being inconvenient, if I'm being inconvenient, but I just think that we need to be judicious when we ask the taxpayer to, to borrow more money when we're sitting on funds that we're paying interest on, that are currently idle. Forgive me.
Bob?
Um, you know, I'm keeping the taxpayers in mind as well. And in my mind, I'd rather see the capital dollars that we have right now devoted toward needed capital projects. I still hear residents complaining about some streets that need to be repaved. That's number one. Number two, when I was at that joint meeting, it was discussed pretty clearly that nobody knows where interest rates are going to go. So if we take this, all this fund balance money, and we still don't have a good, secure source of money for capital project going down the road, so what we're saying is, take the fund balance money, which we should be using for capital projects, put it toward paying for fields, which we decided to do with notes and then eventually pay with open space, and then next year, we'll decide on how we're going to pay for the capital projects. To me, that's not being good stewards of the taxpayers' money. I'm sorry.
Rob, we, we had the opportunity this year to dedicate this fund balance to capital projects, and we didn't. So, I, I, you know, I'm all for capital. I, I think everyone knows that, okay? I've pushed, I think I've pushed harder for capital than anything else for all, as it pertains to infrastructure. So we very well could have increased the capital budget this year by taking money from fund balance to fix all these roads, but we did not. So to me, to say, oh, well, we might have to do it in the future, I, I don't, I don't understand the disconnect. So, look, we can't have it both ways, right? And if we're going to borrow more money, we're going to borrow more money, okay? But I just, if we really wanted to fix Academy Road, we could have by moving the money over, but we didn't. If we wanted to do it this year, we, you know, there's $1.9 million sitting there. We could have spent it all this year on capital, but we didn't.
Yep, and then certainly, the opportunities are, are there, and as we know, we...
And I'd still like the commitment from everyone not to spend this on operating next year, but on capital.
I, I, you know, you, for, for one, you cannot get a, as we learned from a council many years ago, that promised to sell the Civic Center to pay for, or resell Central to pay for Civic Center, you cannot buy in future councils, but we certainly know best practices tells us, and if we want to preserve our AAA bond rating, we will not be using surplus to take care of operating. And I think the people at the center of this table here would not change on that pledge. So I think, I think that's a, a safe thing, but we cannot tie future councils. I think just a quick synopsis of when, before I open up to the residents to ask questions or comment, is, it is a decision, it, I think it's a decision that, just as a consumer, every time you pull out that credit card, you think about how you're going to spend your money and how you're going to cover that. And it is, it is a prudent plan that has been worked on. We looked, as we looked at the open space fund going forward, looked at how we could cover the costs of this, to spread the burden over an extended time, to deliver a great land purchase and a great facility, and also be able to have that flexibility going forward. We have the funding mechanism in, to cover this debt we would take on, and we'd be able to have the peace of mind, knowing that we've, you know, taken care of that and have that flexibility to, such as this year, when we said, wouldn't be more prudent to do all of Ridge Hill Avenue, Water, Water Main. So we, we, we've added things into the capital project that would be prudent, and I see that happening more and more in the future, because we know we're not keeping up with the roads, and, and you're right, we, we need to pick up the pace on that. At this point, I will open up the, to the public. As you said, this is normal, not the process. We always allow that first shot, which is commenting on resolutions that are listed for hearing. So this is going to be first of three opportunities to speak tonight, and this is limited to resolutions 219, 220, 221, and 222, all related to the issuance of bonds. As you step up to the lectern, state your name, your address, and please keep your comments to three minutes or less. Thank you.
South Soschiello Park Avenue, Madison. I have a few questions. I mean, we're, money all over the place here. Last meeting, I, I asked if, how much we had in surplus, and nobody, I heard 10 million, 11, but what, what, with the, am I right for saying that right now, we, taxpayers, between the schools with all the renovations, 55 million, the Borough Hall, the, the new Fire Department down there, 10, 11 million, whatever it was, Borough Hall, and that, that, am I right for saying we're in bonding for about $85 million, and it's cost us around $3 or $4 million interest a year, and now this, this money's going on top of that? Am I, am I, am I saying these things right?
That is correct. The Board of Education is a separate entity.
Yeah, but it's come from our taxpayer.
Well, that's okay, but the figure is still wrong. They, they have a outstanding debt of approximately $45 million from their consolidated bond issue. They've done a good job... They've done a good job of watching the market, I'm sorry. $45 million from the Board of Education, and they've done a good job with their bond council, trying to watch the market and restructure it as appropriate to take advantage of the lower interest rates. The borough's borrowing is approximately $31.5 million, which, the majority of that is in this building, construction of the public safety complex, the purchase of the aerial and the pumper, and $5 million for investment in our store infrastructure. We are significantly over $100 million under our bonded capacity as allowed under state rules. So we are, and then we actually met with S&amp;P today, and they said, one of our strains is the fact that we borrow so little for community. Most other towns, when they do a capital program, they put up 5% and borrow 95%. We do the opposite. We pay as we go.
My question, right, is how much are we bonded as the taxpayer?
76 million dollars.
76 million?
Right.
Am I right for saying that's costing like $3 or $4 million a year interest?
About approximately $2.2 million a year in debt service.
And this bond is going to go on top of that, right?
This bond will be paid for by a dedicated revenue stream that the voters of this community overwhelmingly support it, called an open space tax, and that will be more than sufficient, independent of our taxing authority, to pay this bill.
And Bob, you're right about how councils change. I remember the old days with the Howard lives, and we used to pay as we go, but now all of a sudden, we're 70 something million dollars. But, you know, the bottom line is, no matter how much we're going to talk and everything, it's four to two, it's going to go through because that's the way it is. It's four votes no, I mean, yes, and two votes no.
We'll see, we'll see.
Pat Rowe, 25 Pine. Sam didn't sign in.
We strike his comments immediately right now.
I guess my first question is, are we explaining to people Resolution 219?
Yes, we'll cover that.
Okay. The second thing is, and this is something I've been talking about since probably last September or October when we did the town hall meeting. One of the challenges that I see for the public to understand this is, we don't really have, or we have not really done a good analysis of our long-term financial position vis-à-vis the electric utility. We expect, I believe, to get a significant amount of money starting mid-year from that particular entity, unless we decide to lower the electric rates. Not knowing that makes it very difficult to analyze whether or not, sometimes, keeping an extra $2 million around for something like the joint meeting is necessary or not. I mean, if you're talking about you're going to need the money in 2014, it may dovetail with when you can recognize some additional surplus from the electric utility. I don't know how much the joint meeting costs are potentially going to be. But again, it would be helpful to the community, I think, if we had, took a longer view of some of our financial opportunities and had a full discussion about what type of money we may be seeing coming in versus what type of money we need to particularly put out. The other thing is that, you know, even regardless of what happens with the decision tonight, with the number down to a little over 1 million, with the money that you're going to be taking in from the field use fees and from the user fees, in essence, the fields, the field improvements are now being paid for by everybody but the borough. Because over 15 years, you generate almost the exact amount of money you're going to borrow. Is that correct?
I don't understand how you get that $30 million that you paid for.
No, I'm talking about the improvements.
I, well, they're on the land.
I understand that, but that was, that was a decision that was made before the MRC, the turf project. But the turf project itself, I think, in essence, not the cost, I shouldn't come out of the taxpayers, except for some small amount of money that was put up initially, and possibly some of the current cost after the last several years.
That assumes that the...
That's correct.
Raises their 900,000.
Yep.
Hopefully they do. And at the board of ed, you can pay certain managers who leave that they're coming, that they're paying $1 million. Even not necessarily that, the borough, you know, you don't, you don't really got the main knowledge. The main knowledge, because it's a deposit pay, that wasn't covered by management by their staff. Paying $1 million of taxpayer's funds for that land. So the main knowledge from the hellhole is in the land. When the $3.5 million donation after the turf field, it's 50% of the rest that's paid. So 107,500 dollars is in the borough. And so the borough is in for approximately $1 million too. And that's assuming that the board of ed gives $1 million to them, and that may have been successful. If they're not, you still have the bill of $2 million.
I understand that.
The check's run out, dinner's been ordered, and now the borough here, and I do a study.
Okay, okay, thank you.
But my specific point about the money you're going to borrow now to cover the turf improvements, that money is more or less going to be covered now by the user fees and by the field use fees.
As, if you, the presentation that we covered a couple of months ago showed open space funds, user fees, and others to cover the cost. Currently, the user fees will be going, if I remember the presentation, user fees pretty much cover the short-term borrowing and don't shift over to the long-term borrowing until later. And we also have to remember at some point, the user fees will probably have to shift over to take care of ongoing maintenance, such as the reskinning after about 10 years. So it'll be, you know, it's not...
Depending on what I had discussed, my feeling was, actually, I would have borrowed the money for 10 years instead of 15 because that's the useful life of the field. And then, over time, the next skinning could have been covered by the user fees and field use fees over the next 10 years or so because you're seeing continued growth. And it is kind of a, it'll be less than $1 million too next time, I think. But I think the skinning will probably cost you three quarters of a million, and over 10 years, you'll easily get that much money from those particular fees. So that's a part of the project can be covered. I apologize if I used one of my...
That's all right. Anyone else wishing to be heard?
Sure.
Yep.
Resolution 219.
We'll just, we'll clarify the question so we don't lose track of it. Steve will, our upon council will clarify why we have 2019 and what that purpose.
Your Resolution 219 rescinds the resolutions that were done at the June meeting because at that meeting, it was decided to reduce the amount of the turf field series of bonds by $1 million due to the agreement by the Board of Ed to contribute a million dollars. So we had to rescind those resolutions so that we could reduce the amount of the bond issue.
Ed Repolds, 351 Woodland Road, former council member. There's three things that get my attention here. First of all, if Bob, if Robert's correct, there's a resolution that says that we're going to sell this piece of property to help fund fields. Is that correct? When that goes out to the public, the public expects that to happen. This is a, to me, is, and I remember back then, that we sell these things, where does that money go? And your resolution, and I'm saying the council's committed to this population to carry out those resolutions, not just to stick it in a slush fund and whoever wants it gets it, or whatever, how it does. You're selling, go on record and commit to this community that that money is going to, from that asset is going into the fields. It should go there. That's my opinion. Also, sitting back here, I hear, we're going to, we're not sure what, the feeling, the impression I'm getting is, we're not sure what our capital requirements are, or what we're going to need to borrow next year. And I'm scratching my head, and I said, well, where is the capital plan? Why are we not knowing what is our capital plan? And if we need capital to fund projects next year, it should be on the working table now. So I'm a little concerned about the status of our capital plan. Now, as I said, I've been here for a while. I remember also a discussion several years ago about utility rates. And I remember coming on council just as that was happening, and we got to hurry. Got to hurry because they're going up, going up, and let's commit to a long-term commitment, okay? In that action, that time, we were in a rush because we were fearful of rates increasing. Well, we all know that's caused us, cost us several million dollars over that length of that contract. So when people got a rush to do things and this, and there's some question here, I get, I say, slow down, take a look at it closer. I'm not sure, and to allude that, well, we might need these funds, and we don't know what we're going to get from open space, and don't really, doesn't sound like we know what we're going to spend it on. I'm a little concerned about that. Again, the resolution, this council is a piece of trust that you stated, this council stated, that those funds were going for fields, and that's in writing, it's been approved, it should be followed through. Thank you.
Just a couple of clarifications. One is, the, there is a capital plan, and we know that we're not keeping up as much as we can. So it's not as if we're, we don't have a plan. We certainly have a, we have to present a five-year plan to the state. Every year, it gets revised, and it is probably not as aggressive as it should be, as we know is the driving... That's important. I'm just clarifying, please step back. And the, again, to clarify the funding promise, you talked about maybe went into a slush fund or whatever, we don't know. As happened there, that money from that sale went into the capital fund. So whether it was used for fields or anything else, it could only be used for capital projects. As was said at that time, and I think it's a very good policy for this council, any other council, if you sell an asset, you better create an asset. At that time, when that property was sold, we took something off of the balance sheet by selling an asset, by making sure you made, that money went into capital, it went into capital projects, and basically created a new asset so that it was balance sheet neutral, as it should be.
And I see that as a promise to the community that those monies are going to use for that field.
Hi, everybody. My name is Richard Hessian. My address is 1474 Cornwall Road in Mawa, New Jersey. I'm, I was talking about back there, I came, I obviously had no plan on speaking tonight at all. I was coming here just to listen to the meeting. I'm looking with my family, I have two and four-year-olds, and so we're looking in several towns in the surrounding area to see where I'm going to live. They're going to be going to kindergarten, I'd like to kind of settle someplace. And I lived in Whitehall for a number of years. So it was suggested by my wise father that you go to a town hall meeting and go to a borough meeting and see what's going on, and you get a good sense of the town and what they do. And I just thought it would be an interesting perspective from you guys, as someone who doesn't live here yet but is considering living here, and it's been a hell of a cool meeting because I heard some really interesting stuff. The gentleman before said slush fund, and it's funny because it's what came to my mind when I was listening to the meeting. And I just wanted to make sure I had questions because I wasn't clear on everything. Councilman Catalinello said operating costs. He was saying, we just want to make sure it's promised that it's not used for, what did that mean? Is that...
So basically, quick little history, three-year history within 30 seconds or less was the, we are a AAA rated community, and that's based on our business practices, our borrowing level, and how we've run our projects. And recently, we got a AAA with negative outlook. And one of the feedback was, was we had a structural deficit, and that structural deficit was we were using more surplus generated from the previous year in the following year's budget. So, you know, you weren't, it helps during a rainy time, but it's not a good long-term strategy. So to take dollars out of other pots to cover the day-to-day operations is just not a good practice. And that would hurt someone's AAA rating. And so the fact that we don't do that, and any future council decided to do that, would affect the AAA bond rating that the borough has, that's what that comment was related to.
Got it, okay, yeah, it's important for us to know. But having heard, what I appreciated more from any of the council members tonight was, Sukamoto, is that correct? Her analogy, the credit card analogy, I appreciate. I'm a simple man. And for me, everything I heard everyone saying was very relevant. I work on Wall Street, so I know a little bit about the interest rate assumptions going forward. And I think it's safe to say we're probably going to be okay for a while. That's just my own personal opinion. I think things are going to stay very low for a little bit of time. And I just can't imagine, from someone considering fiscal responsibility, when I'm hearing you guys have a conversation, it mystified me a little because if you already had 2 million bucks, and you said it's been already sitting there for two or three years, from my understanding, it's basically unused, and now it sounded like everyone's concerned that they're going to need it, but it's been sitting there already for 2 and 1/2 years paying interest. And if I was doing that and just, you know, paying down my debt, and that's what I do, right? You service your debt with your paychecks, then the idea of going out and borrowing fresh money didn't make any sense. And you suggested maybe keeping 900 grand in there, or 700 grand, and then you don't even have to float the B-bond, right? Is that what it was, for 1.2 odd million? And it seemed like it was the best of all worlds, it seemed like the most fiscally responsible. Like, I'm surprised that there's even a, and somebody had said there's probably going to be a four to two vote, that it's going to automatically go through. And I said, well, when he first said it, I was like, well, that's not going to be true, right? I mean, you, I couldn't imagine, because it just doesn't seem fiscally responsible in that you know that you have the money there already. There was already a vote passed where it sounded like the specific words, and I don't know all the stuff, but fields or the turf fields that you guys paid for, it sounded like a million dollars if it was already specifically named for that anyway. So I was just, I don't know, just as somebody who's considering, it just seemed to me that it didn't make a lot of sense. But thank you very much. It's been a very, very informative meeting.
And as you do your home search, we hope you settle in Madison. And I think if you do some research, you'll find as, return on your tax dollar investment will be very impressive in Madison with the services you get. Sam? No.
That gentleman didn't sign his name over here. I want to sell him the house.
If you didn't sign your name, if you can come back up and do that.
They left him a blank box.
All right.
Sam Damarza, Ridgedale Avenue. Couple of things. First of all, I'd like to know when the last time we had a phone-in vote on anything. I know it's not illegal, Bob, but it's highly unusual, and there was plenty of times when other members, both Democrat and Republican, would have loved to call in and have a vote like that. I just, I don't recall any time. I wish there was some history on this. And I wish there was a sheet to show the rules on that, just for the general public to have a little background that that's an okay thing to do.
Actually, I was going to have the attorney cover that, so before we go into the actual votes, I will have the attorney cover that.
Okay, fine. I don't personally like it. It leaves a bad flavor in the general public. Not to have someone there face-to-face when you're voting on something so important that it affects everyone, both Democrat, Republican, it goes across all lines. But it's an important thing to have someone get the vibe of the crowd, and then you come up with your opinion to vote, okay? By phone, it's very generic, it's very homogenized, it's not Madison. I totally disagree with how it's going tonight, all right? Never saw anything like this. Okay, now, obviously, that's going to take its course. The thing that no one really brought up at all, there was supposed to be a rock with Don Lanks's name out on this field. I don't see any rock. I don't see any name. I know Don is very sick. And it would be nice to have this complete before that poor fellow that really fought hard for the kids to do this shuts his eyes someday.
That's in process. When Bob does his report, Bob, can you add that to your report as an update? Thank you.
And when will that take place?
After we get to these resolutions, we're going to move on to department reports.
Great. Okay, one more thing. Obviously, I live on Ridgedale. They have a forge that's next to the 105 House. There's been a grave open up over there for quite, well, probably about two years. Now, I understand the kids like to go there and dig and sift the dirt and all that stuff. Did the same thing as kids, and I guarantee there's not too much in that dirtland. But, long and the short, an open ditch is a danger, it's a liability for the town. And how did that get left in that state so long? It's ridiculous, it needs to get attention immediately. I can't take looking at it anymore. You got kids going in and out of there, you have people visiting from time to time. It's bad for the town. It's bad to have that open ditch in that walkway, right off the walkway.
Thank you. We're on the comments on the resolutions, but we will make sure we've captured that, and we will, and Kathy Cultis is in the audience. So we will, and we'll get her status back to you on that, I'd say. Anyone else wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, I close the part of the meeting and ask for a motion on Resolution 219-2013.
Do you want me to explain first?
Yes, thank you, yep.
The Open Public Meeting Act permits people to vote telephonically or electronically. They have to be present, they have to hear. The Attorney General of New Jersey has actually issued an opinion that bodies can vote remotely through it. It's not illegal, as long as the people are participating, and you hear that both council members have participated, have asked questions, the public's heard them ask questions. So it is legal. The New Jersey League of Municipalities Council also concurs that it is a permissible way of conducting a meeting.
Thank you.
Isn't it also, this vote requires a majority...
What happens when you're dealing with, whenever you're dealing with bonding, the law mandates that when you're dealing with the issuance of money, you need a two-thirds vote of the entire governing body. So you will need four out of six votes. As you know, in the borough former government, the mayor only votes in the case of a tiebreaker, so the mayor doesn't vote. So it'll be, you require four out of the six minimum to have these resolutions pass.
Actually, for resolutions, it comes out to the same number, four, but it's a majority of the council, so it would be four.
Question to ask, if I may?
Yes.
And in the case that council members wants to vote either electronically or via the phone, they can only, they're allowed to participate only in a portion of the council meeting and not the entire thing?
Well, just like, for example, they can't vote electronically, they have to participate electronically, yeah. So you can't like email it in, right. If you wanted to in the middle of a meeting, if you wanted to get up and leave, you're permitted to leave. You're not, you don't have to be here the entire meeting, and people do excuse themselves from meetings. If it comes to a point where enough people excuse themselves from meetings, you may not have a form to conduct further business. So that's something that, you know, council people can stay on the phone for the entire meeting, or they can decide to, you know, Councilwoman Bailey would say, you know what, it's 10 o'clock, I have to leave, I got, you know, something urgent going on, you're permitted to leave.
Thank you.
Right, so a motion for Resolution 219-2013. It's a resolution rescinding Resolutions 211 and 212 of prescribing details in bond forms for general improvement, bond series A and B.
May I move that?
Do you have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Sukamoto?
Yes.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
And Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Okay, a motion for Resolution 220-2013, 2013. Resolution prescribing details and bond form thereof of 2,888,000 general improvement bond, series A, dated August 15, 2013.
I move that?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call vote?
Mrs. Sukamoto?
Yes.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
A motion for Resolution 221, 2013. Resolution prescribing details and bond form thereof for 1.1, 1,263,000 general improvement bond, series B, dated August 15, 2013. I have a motion.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second it.
Council discussion, Oscar?
Yeah, I just want to say that the issues that Mr. Catalinello raised tonight were very good ones, and the discussion obviously should have taken place a lot earlier than this. And I'm, you know, that's what we're supposed to be about. I mean, people talk about this council and some of the comments tonight were a criticism, and I think they should rightly criticize us if we can't have a full and honest discussion in a timely fashion when it was first brought up. This is the first time this has been brought up. What comes to mind is this was just a little political platform for you to start, you know, your campaign. Thank you.
I take, I take exception to that comment, and it's completely against your rules, ma'am, about we're supposed to treat each other similarly. I have nothing but the best interest of the Madison taxpayer in mind, and if people think it's political, maybe because that's the way they think and they do.
Thank you. Please, any other discussion? Okay, Bob?
Just want to make sure everybody understands my point on this one. Rob brought up a lot of good points. I know he's been an advocate for capital projects over the years, and, you know, I think everybody in this council has supported it. If I had to say, and I'm not going to second-guess past councils on what happened, because quite frankly, I wasn't around to listen to it, and second-guessing anybody doesn't do anyone any good. We have an issue now, which is we have a bill to be paid for the land in the turf fields, and that needs to be addressed. There is money sitting in fund balance, which, yes, you could make an argument, use it to pay down that bond, but then what you're going to do is you're going to short-change your capital balance, you know, the funds available to do capital projects. If anything needs to be criticized, it's the fact that maybe we should have been a little more aggressive with our capital projects program. I don't know, because there's another piece which says, and I was with the S&amp;P people today, they don't want you using up all the money in the bank, because that starts to affect your credit rating. So I'll just go back to my original premise. The plan was, and it always has been, that the turf fields and the land would be paid for with open space money. These bonds will be funded with open space money. If for some reason we can get them paid sooner, and I'm hopeful that the MAF comes through with their fundraising, then guess what, you get to lower your open space tax. That's flexible, and we can do that. The other money, the capital money, it should be used for capital projects because our infrastructure is the key to why it keeps this town running. It's why I'm OEM Coordinator, I understand the need for a good, sound infrastructure, and I think that money should stay designated for needed capital projects, not for something which was, I don't want to say a nice-to-have, it's something the town should have had, but that should be paid for with discretionary funds. This money, capital money, should stay with capital projects.
Rob, and then you're Gini, and then Rob.
Okay, yes, it is true that we've been discussing this issue for many months already, but the amount of the bond for this particular case has been changing in every discussion. So it is not that we've been fixed on one number, and this is a total surprise that Rob and I are suggesting something different. Because those of you who've been coming to council meetings probably remember, in the very beginning, we are talking about bonding 3.2 million dollars to start with. And then that amount was reduced by, throughout the past few months of discussion, that amount was reduced by the MAF contribution of a million, which we discussed over and over again. And I believe this is the first time since, since the entire discussion, that we're again reducing the number from 2.2 million to what we're seeing now of the 1.2 million. So this number has been changing, and yes, I think that we're having good discussion on this, and, and I think the suggestion was a good one, and if we believe we have a good suggestion, we certainly should express it here in the opening meeting. Thank you.
Rob?
Thank you, Bob. You know, if anyone has followed what I've done, I've done my best to repair the infrastructure in this town, that's why I ran. I wanted to get control of taxes, and I wanted to repair the infrastructure. As it pertains to this, and the availability of funds, how do we know? I would gladly, I would gladly drop my suggestion of paying 1 million dollars out of fund balance to cover this if there was consensus among the governing body that we would use this money truly for capital projects. However, historically, I'm not sure that we've always done that. I don't think, when S&amp;P talks about spending down the money in the bank, I'm not, I wasn't at the meeting, but I'm not sure they're talking about not spending down money that we had previously borrowed for a project that was canceled. I would imagine they were talking about surplus that we generate to the water utility, electric utility, or some other bank. So that's why I think it's so important that we consider using the million dollars that was committed by the council in 2007, one month before a general election, so that we ensure that this money is used in the proper fashion, okay? You know, whether or not on council next year, that'll be up to the voters, but, but the council next year has every, will have every opportunity to reevaluate the way that they tax. And you can cut, if we've got a surplus, if we're collecting too much open space, we can cut that open space, and you can redirect that to capital, okay? We could have used all this money to spend on capital, this year we did. And while all of a sudden it's such a panic, we might do it next year, I don't know. So that's why I strongly urge that we consider either pledging that we will use that money that's currently in fund balance for capital projects next year, or the next few years, or we use it to live up to the commitment made by the council in October, on October 10, 2007, dedicate 1 million dollars for fields. I feel as though this resolution does that, but now we're just figuring out how we're going to pay for it. Thank you.
All right, just a couple of quick comments before the vote. Just a reminder that the complex is not the end-all of all the investments in our field, we'll be continuing that, and many future councils will be. We know that the project at the MRC is a great one to be proud of, but we know that there's outstanding parts of it, bleachers and other elements that will, plenty of opportunities to provide more investment. We are committing 1.2 million to long-term borrowing, but remind, as a reminder, though we feel very good about the other sources, those are not guaranteed at this point. So we actually have a 2.6 million, actually, it's, you know, we're, well, you know, we're 2.6 million plus as outstanding debt really is sitting out on this field. So this is just securing one part in a, you know, that we know we have a funding source for, and we can cover it in future years, and there won't be any surprises. Okay, roll call vote?
Mrs. Sukamoto?
No.
Mr. Catalinello?
No.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Four-two. All right, motion for Resolution 222, 2013, and I've been reading all these, and do I really need to read the full title?
Oh, this one, yes.
All right, I'll let you do that.
You want me to read this one? I'd be happy to. Okay, Resolution 222, 2013. Resolution authorizing the publication, printing, and distribution of a notice of sale, and the publication of a summary notice of sale, and prescribing the forms thereof for 2,888,000 dollars, general capital improvement bond, series A, and 1,263,000 general improvement bond, series B. Both issued dates August 15, 2013, approving the preparation, distribution, and execution of the preliminary, and a final official statement for such bonds, undertaking to provide continuing disclosure of financial information, covening to comply with the Internal Revenue Code of 1986, as amended, designating such bonds as qualified tax-exempt obligations for purpose of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986, as amended and authorize, and authorizing various matters in connection with electronic bidding for bonds.
Thank you. We have a motion for that, Resolution 222, 2013.
I so move.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion? Genie, and then Rob?
Yep, I just want to say that I'm in favor of series A, but not in favor of series B, but I can't, we can't break it down, and when we cast our vote.
Thank you. Rob?
I have made my objections, I think, pretty clear. However, since the council passed R221-2013, despite my objections regarding the funding of the series B bonds, I'll be voting yes in this. However, the noted objections report, since the rule of the council was to proceed with the vote.
Thank you. Any other comments? Roll call vote?
Mrs. Sukamoto?
Yes.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
And Ben and Carmella, if at any point you are going to leave, listening in on the meeting, please let us know so we can do the note in the minutes.
I am leaving.
All right, let it, minutes reflect that...
I am, I am also. Thank you for the opportunity, appreciate it.
Thank you for taking the time to be involved in this very important decision for the borough, and enjoy...
Well, it was an important call to be on, thank you.
Enjoy your vacations.
Thank you. Oh, we will, thank you. Bye now.
Bye.
Okay, now on to reports from committees. Health, you just lost Carmella, Genie, do you have a...
Yep, I have the report. So I will be reporting on health, electric, and water.
Health and utilities, very good, thank you.
Okay, first, the electric department. The department has been repairing overheated cable connections and replacing bad transformers due to the extreme heat. The department continues its work on pole transfers and cable installation. The department is also continuing the repair work at James Park Substation. It has replaced all four analog voltage tap changer controllers with new digital types, and is in the process of rewiring and installing new parallel relays into the transformers. The new voltage tap changers are being closely monitored during the heat wave to assure proper voltage into the system. The water department has repaired the well booster pump at the treatment center on John Avenue. The Midwood tank is now on radio communications, replacing telephone line communications to monitoring system located at the plant. A new chlorine sensor are working at all the wells. Also, the Woodland Row and Green Avenue intersection has been renewed with eight-inch valves and pipes. The Green Village Row main from Garfield Avenue to Shanghai was replaced before paving, before paving, just this week. The water system is maintaining water supply through the heat wave. During the heat wave, we pumped about 2.8 million gallons a day. This is way below other years where the gallons per day have reached 3.3 million. We thank, we would like to thank the residents for allowing, excuse me, we, we would like to thank the residents for following watering guidelines issued by the department. I also have a report from the health department. The health department is working with New Jersey Blood Services to host a blood drive at the Madison Volunteer Ambulance Corps on July 30th from 1:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Anyone who donates blood will receive two free Mads tickets and will be entered to a chance to win two Super Bowl tickets. As many of you know, the blood supply during the summer months is extremely low, so your generous donation will be greatly appreciated. Before we know it, the flu season will be here. We would like to remind all parents with preschool children that any child who attends preschool or daycare and is between the age of six to 59 months must have a flu shot by December 31st to remain at the facility during flu season. Animal census has been continuing throughout the community. If you have not renewed your license to date, please come in as soon as possible to the health department. All rabies vaccines must be given through October 31, 2013. All rabies vaccines must be good through October 31st, 2013. The Madison Health Department now provides vaccines through the New Jersey Vaccine for Adults Program. This program allows those who are uninsured or underinsured to receive vaccines such as meningitis, VastarVax, hepatitis A, and hepatitis B. Anyone interested in these vaccines should contact the public health nurse for more details and for an appointment. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Public Works and Engineering, Mr. Catalinello?
Thank you, Mayor. The County of Morris has initiated the milling and repaving of the entire Green Village Road from Shunpike to Main Street. Please pay attention to borough announcements for road closures. Regarding the Sampson Avenue sidewalks, the federal reimbursement for a portion of the project cost will be completed upon a final inspection by the state and approval of the final payment and change order-related documentation on the contractor. On Rosedale Avenue, new manhole covers and drainage inlet improvements are in progress. Green Avenue, the Green Avenue bid documents have been approved by the New Jersey Department of Transportation, and the project has been advertised with a bid opening date of August 8th. New Jersey Department of Transportation will fund the project in part as a result of approving the 2013 municipal aid program application, as it pertains to the sewers. The Campbellwood Pump Station, check valves at the pump station have been replaced in the past month, and plans are being drawn in-house to repair the station for additional upgrades. At the Treadwell Pump Station, CME Associates has completed the plans, specifications, and cost estimates for the upgrades to pump, to the pump station last month. Those bid documents impact the budget and therefore must be evaluated for component replacement short term. The specifications have been used to obtain quotes for installing a compliant sewer pump station, emergency generator. North Street Pump Station, a new communitar grinder system has been ordered for the pump station and will be installed over the next 60 days based on an equipment back order. The West End Pump Station, replacement electric panel boxes have been installed, and the station is being evaluated for an above-ground emergency transfer switch which would eliminate the need for confined space entry. As it pertains to the storm drains, Central Ave, Elmer Street, a meeting with Morris County engineers was attended to expedite funding and construction of both the Spring Garden Culvert and the Elmer Street bypass sewer to alleviate flash flood impact to public facilities in the area. Regarding the water main replacement projects, Garcia Construction has completed the first phase of the 2013 water main replacement project, starting at Green Intersection and proceeding to the Green Village Road Water Main Replacement. Garcia Construction is currently working on Ridgedale Avenue, and this phase is likely to require the month of August to complete. I don't know if anyone has noticed, but the signs are out advising that the road will be closed, so please pay close attention when you're on your way to the community garden spot, or the fields. Finally, the Bailey Ellard Site Remediation Plan, the capping plan is required to be filed with the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection to deal with historic fill issues at this location. Staff, borough staff, has been involved in the development of planning and construction documents in conjunction with a new environmental consultant, Hatchmop McDonald. With sufficient funding, the remediation construction may begin this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Community affairs, and if anything, finance, we will have a report on the reassessment, revall, a little bit, too.
All righty, thank you, Mayor. Not a whole lot to report, this is a fairly quiet time of month in Madison. What I will say is, go to the farmer's market every Thursday, I'm getting good reviews about it. And I do have an announcement from the clerk's office. The last day for voter registration for the August 13th special primary election for U.S. Senate is July 23rd. Applications are available in the clerk's office and online at morriselections.org. Applications for vote-by-mail ballots are also available in the borough clerk's office or online, and must be filed by mail before August 6th, 2013. Now I'll speak about Don's plaque.
Yes.
Okay, yeah. In regards to the plaque for Councilman Don Links, I've been working with several members of the REC Committee to have it set up. DPW has moved the boulder from the pool over to the MRC. It's, the boulder now sits right in front of the three flags that you see when you look from, at the, when you look at the fields from the parking lot. The plaque has been designed, it's being put, done by Stuart Mars, it's going to be a bronze plaque. We've been in contact with Don's wife, who approved the wording, as well as the image of Don on the plaque. It's actually being fabricated right now. Stuart Mars has gone out there and looked at the proper size to fit on the boulder itself. Funding is in progress, I delivered over to one of the REC Committee members' homes today, personal checks from several members of council who wanted to donate toward the plaque. Our hope is to get it in place before, you know, he does pass. I've also, I'm going to be reaching out to Jim Sanderson, because in the event that Don cannot make it out of the hospital, we want to find a way that we could stream a video of it or some ceremony so he can see it. The hope is to get this done as soon as possible.
Thank you for the report, and thank you for working with REC Committee on that. Public Safety, Ms. Bailey?
Thank you, Mayor. The Fire Department has reported that they have had all their five-inch large diameter hose tested this past July, and all the hoes passed. They continue to look for new volunteers, if you are between the ages of 18 and 45, in good physical and mental health, no criminal record, and want to help your community, please consider joining the Fire Department as a volunteer, and for more information and application, you can go to www.madisonfd.com. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And as part of the finance report, we want to just touch a little bit on the revall.
Yep. Ray, you want? Jim Burnett put a frequently asked question sheet together, it's posted on the borough website, on the finance page, and also on the mayor council page, so we'd encourage residents, and hopefully those in the viewing audience, to go to review that. It's also been distributed through the media, and I believe Patch, Jake has put a nice piece on it. There's, there's five basic questions, or six basic questions, that we'd like to just reinforce for those people who don't have access to that. Why did we go through the revaluation? That was not a voluntary decision by the borough. The last revall was in 1999, it was effective in 2000. The Morris County Board of Taxation, which regulates this area, not at our request, but at, by, through an order, directed us to perform a revaluation, because the equalized valuation ratios for Madison properties had, was below 57% of true value, and the county directed us through an order that would have been enforced by the Attorney General if we disregarded it, to mandate a revall. That's why it happened. Why are the tax bills marked estimated is the second question, the, and, you know, the tax bill is made up of the Board of Education, the municipal purposes tax, and the county. The schools have done a good job with their process of adopting a budget, and so has the municipality. The county is still not certified to their final tax consequence to us. We have an estimate from them, so we had to pass on that estimate as part of our tax bill to our residents. That's why it's called an estimated bill. The moment they certify, we'll be able to certify that, and that should be reflected in the fourth quarter tax bills, which will be mailed out in September. The mailing in September will have an insert explaining this whole process, so that our residents will get more information together with their bill, and not just a bill coming to them. They'll, they'll get an actual insert explaining this. A number of residents seem to be taking the third quarter payment on their estimated bill, multiplying it by four, and believing that's their annual tax. That is not their annual tax bill, it's actually lower, so that's incorrect to take your, that figure on the third quarter and multiply by four and say that's going to be the four-quarter payment. In this frequently asked question is a mathematical examination or example of how to properly compute that. We would suggest residents who are making that mistake should be also careful when, because of those who have mortgages, the mortgage escrow company obviously is escrowing for taxes, there'll be in, in near future, probably a request from your lender, computing whether you have sufficient funds in your escrow to pay your property taxes, and they may be making the same error. So you need to carefully review your escrow statement when it comes in. Next question is, why wasn't the assessed values of all house increased by the same amount? Since in the last 13 years, obviously some neighborhoods have appreciated and valued more than others, people have made improvements to their homes, or the condition of the property has not been maintained, and it's gone the other way. So those values and improvements, or lack of improvements and lack of maintenance, or perfect maintenance, is reflected in evaluation. So even though the residential properties in town went on, up on average 63%, not everyone went up 63. Some went below, some went significantly above, and we can explain that a little bit later. The revall, the question was, I thought it wasn't going to affect taxes, are you raising more money through the revall? We are not. The goal of the revall was just to allocate the bill, and we use the example that you go to a restaurant, and there's 10 people there, and you divide the bill up. If everybody had the same thing, everybody would get the same cost of the bill. If somebody had an appetizer, somebody had dessert, and somebody didn't, they're going to get a greater bill. So I equate, that appetizer is that extra sunroom you put on the back of your house, or the deck, or the, the new bathroom in the basement, or you finished your basement, is equivalent. So the people who have moved ahead and made improvements to their home, or that their property has appreciated in value, will get a request from the borough through their tax bill to pay more of the costs of funding the operations of government. What can you do if you think your revall is too high? We're encouraging everyone, obviously, to file an appeal if you feel aggrieved by it. The problem is, for those people who just got their tax bills, the filing deadline for this year was May 1st, so obviously they're out of time. That was not Wilf on our part, we didn't have the figures, and we still don't have the figures from the county, to, to not hold back a bill. We sent it out, and we have the estimated information that we could get from the county. That appeal process is an annual process, so if people are still aggrieved and still feel they haven't gotten the relief or the attention or the right figure for them, and if they, in their heart feel the value on that revaluation letter is more than they could legitimately and honestly sell their home or value their home, then they should appeal. And if they want to do that, the county tax board process will start for 2014 in January, and from January 1st on, the county will accept those appeal forms. The filing deadline, we want to call everybody's attention, is one month earlier than this year. In a revall year, it's May 1st, in a normal year, it's April 1st. So if you want to file an appeal of your taxes for 2014, the deadline will be April 1st, 2014. Don't need a lawyer, $25 filing fee, and you can present your evidence on yourself. I would note that the county, we had 79 homeowners file tax appeals at the county for this cycle for 2013, and the valuations determined by certified valuations and presented by the borough in the form of taxes, the borough prevailed in 78 of the 79 cases, so.
Can you maybe mention why some go to the county and some go to the state?
Yes. Some, some go to, the county generally, and this is a generalization, have, has jurisdictions of property values of $1 million or less, and it's a streamlined formula, you can do it a little more informally, it's a $25 filing fee, you don't need an attorney, and, and the evidence rules are a little more flexible. At the, if a value above $1 million, you have to go to the state tax court, which is a more complicated filing, and it's a longer period before you, they're probably two years backlog on, in terms of getting a hearing and adjudication. So if you want a faster response for a less costly method, they go to the county. If you want, if you have a more complex case, commercial property or high-value property, you would go to the state. The, a couple of things we've done, because we've had a number of calls from our residents, we've increased the staffing in the, with the governing bodies' help in the tax assessor's office, so we now have a, an additional part-time person, 24, 29 hours a week, five days a week. We, as the mayor alluded to earlier, Milburn, we share the assessor with Milburn. She works in Milburn three days a week, and she's here Thursdays and Fridays. We sat down with the Milburn administrator and negotiated an adjustment in the schedule for the next couple of weeks, so the assessor will now be in our building in person and available to meet residents from 8:00 a.m. to 4:30, Monday afternoons, Tuesday afternoons, all day Wednesday, all day Thursday, all day Friday, and that's at least for the next two weeks. And we're encouraging residents who want a face-to-face meeting to come in and meet the assessor, view your property record card, make sure it's accurate, and express whatever concerns you have, and if we can resolve things informally, or at least prepare you for the next attempt to appeal your taxes, we'll be glad to be of assistance in terms of that. In the absence of the assessor, the CFO has been meeting with residents on a one-on-one basis, Jim and I have been meeting with residents, so we never want a resident to come to, to the Borough Hall and the assessor's not here, so we always meet with those individuals. And the last thing is, as a general overview, there's 4,000, 4,765 properties in Madison that went through the revaluation, and are looking at a, what we call a histogram of where we thought we would be. The general norm is about one-third of the properties go down, one-third of the properties stay pretty flat or close, modest increase, and one-third go up appreciably. And of the 4,000, 4,765 properties, 1,672, which is in excess of 35%, their values actually went down, and their tax bill went down year to year from 2012 to 2013, and on the histogram, about one-third of the properties stayed right in the middle, and one-third of the properties went up. So the ones we hear from are not the people whose taxes went down, or the ones who stayed flat, the ones who are concerned and bring it to our attention are the ones who went up and want an explanation why, and we're glad to give that, and we encourage people to come here and talk to us about it, and we'll meet with them whenever they're available. The tax appeal forms are online, and they're also available in the tax assessor's office, in the borough clerk's office, and throughout Borough Hall. And I just encourage people to look at the frequently asked questions on the revall, and if you have questions, call us, or come in and make an appointment, and meet the assessor.
Thank you very much. Very helpful, and key thing is, we have staff here to support you and take you through all your questions, and help you out. Okay, communications and petitions?
None received, Mayor.
All right, this is a second of three invitations for discussion for tonight under our special rules, and this is the one where you may comment on the two agenda items, which is the Cole Park Fountain, and also the FCC license for radio station 1630 on your AM dial. And also you may comment on any of the resolutions that are listed. Under those rules, anyone wishing to comment, please step up to lectern, state your name, your address, write the same, and keep your comments to three minutes or less. Anyone wishing to be heard?
Kathy Holden, Lieutenant Stonehenge Lane, also a member of the Parks Committee, and also a member of the Historical Society. Edith, Bob, do you want me to address Mr. DeMarzo?
Yes, if you could, that would be helpful.
Okay. First, I'd just like to give you a little bit of background on the Cole Park Fountain. It was a gift to the borough of Madison in, in 1918. His wife had, Howard Cole's wife had died in 1917, and this was a, a larger park at that point. It had lots of components, and he also built the fountain, which you can see there today. In, through the 80s and 90s, early 90s, it deteriorated quite a bit, and the borough actually removed the top section and took it over to Borough Hall to protect it. So in 1993, 1994, and 1995, we did a fundraising effort and raised $25,000 to repair the fountain. Five, 5,000 of that was a, a grant, and the rest was all private contributions. So we had a local person, Nancy Jeffries, who is an artist, and she volunteered to take a lot of time to do all the, all the tiles over again, and it's an exact replica, unfortunately the, the top was not in good enough shape, so that had to be redone. So in 1995, we had kind of a, an event that was as close to the original event in 1918 as we could make it, with the mayor and a band and that kind of thing participating. So now the fountain needs repairs again, of course not as serious as it was in, in 1993, but it has hairline cracks, the mildew has gotten at it, needs to be thoroughly cleaned, and it can't be, it really needs a craftsman to do the job. It's not just something you can slap some concrete on to fix it. There's a piece of the lip that's come off, and that needs to be replaced, but as I say, it needs a special kind of concrete and special knowledge to deal with something like that. So that's why we're asking, we have $1,700 raised privately, and we are asking for $8,000 for, from the Open Space Fund to complete that project. It needs to be done, you know, as soon as possible, every, you know, every winter that goes through, it gets worse, so we would like to have the approval of the mayor and council for that $8,000.
And if you could, and just so the public understand, I probably should have had Kathy hold off and speak as the official, and as we got to the agenda item, as the official representative of the Parks Committee, so I didn't have the clock running, because you would have been speaking anyway on that, so thank you for covering that, and then if you could stay when we get to the agenda item to answer any questions that may come up. And if you could, if you could cover the Forge, if, do you want to handle that right now while you're at the microphone, and then we'll?
To address Mr. DeMarzo's comments, he is right, the hole is kind of unsightly. Just to give you a quick background on what's happened in the Forge, the Historical Society applied for three grants from the New Jersey Historical Commission and got them. So in the three years that we had those grants, on the day of service, high school students came over and spent the day there with Dr. Ian Burrow, who's from Hunter Research. So they got a lot of education and an expert to help them. And during the first year, they dug up 1,300 Forge-related they dug up 1,300 Forge-related items. They just, they had a blast. They were just digging up things everywhere in shovel tests. And the next year, we did some more shovel tests but also started looking for the foundation of the original Forge. So we did find that the second year, they found one wall and the third year, they found another wall. And like something that you spend, I think with all three grants, it was about $25,000. So when you find something as exciting as the old foundation, you don't want to cover it up. And so actually, Mr. DeMarzo, with your knowledge of building and that kind of thing, might actually...
Oh, Kathy, this should be perfected so someone doesn't...
Yeah.
...step into it. That's my whole point.
So...
It's not that the kids need to be educated with whatever.
No, no.
Sam, hold on a second. I appreciate that. So I think we've got the information and I think you might, might have been getting ready to recruit Sam. So maybe we can have a conversation offline at this point to do that. So we can, it is that we want to keep people safe and it is a great opportunity. So we'll...
Right.
Yep, yep.
We do, we do want to have people able to see that. And at this point, there's an application that has to be sent because it's on the historic registry. There's an application that has to be sent for anything that gets done there. And so that's in the process of being done. And the Historical Society has raised $6,000 to do the work there and renovating the inside.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
And so stay nearby in case there's any questions on Cole Fountain when we get there. Anyone else wishing to comment on the two agenda items or resolutions that are listed? Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting and move on to Cole Park Fountain, which Kathy set up very nicely. Do we have any questions for Kathy or comments? Jeanie?
Yeah. Kathy, moving forward, is there anything that we can do to protect the fountain so we don't have to go through the repairs, extensive repairs?
Yeah, I think this is something that has to be addressed, you know, on a five-year basis continually to keep it in the shape that it, that it should be in. We've looked into, they do cover it up during the winter, but the hairline cracks, you know, the water gets in. And I know I've seen some fountains in other countries and in New York City that have a huge wooden structure to keep it protected. But I think we just have to keep after it. And we've let it go too long this time. And I think we need, the person who we've asked to do it for the price of $9,700 is the same company that did the Drew Gate, the Stone Gate. So I think we have confidence that they can do a good job. But I think this is something that'll have to be revisited every two or three years just to make sure that it's, you know, kept in good condition.
And do they have abilities, give some, after they do the work, some recommendations on, on how we can do our best to maintain it?
Mm-hmm.
Rob?
I think it's a totally justifiable expenditure. My only question is procedural. If I'm not mistaken, in a previous meeting, we passed legislation that required the Open Space Committee, the first meeting here every quarter, to update us on the status of projects and requests and the coordination request for money. I haven't, given this is the first meeting of the quarter, I haven't seen it. Does that preclude us from awarding this money? Because I don't think the legislation would preclude us from awarding money to projects. But I'm curious as to why we haven't seen that, that status. But I think this is something we should address before the foul weather comes. Otherwise, just eventually we'll next year.
Actually, there was an agenda rec to have it on this, this meeting just because of people that would not be able to make it. We pushed it off. So...
But we can still vote on this.
Right. And the committee did review this as a project.
The application that the committee requests of every project is attached to your gender recommendation. And I gave an oral report, maybe the last meeting, listing how much money was in the Open Space Trust Fund and that, I mean, we certainly have enough money to give $8,000. And the committee recommends that we do so. I have the pictures. This is the 1996 when it was completely renovated and cleaned up. One of the major problems now, it's just water. Water is very corrosive. And so today, this is what happens over time. We create the damage. So it'll be an ongoing maintenance plan for it.
Any other questions or comments?
Hope I left it all.
Yeah, yeah.
Routine maintenance.
We just need the fountain of youth still. So that's ordinance 33, 2013. That's listed for introduction. FCC license?
I can do that. That's the ten-year license from the FCC. It's a traveler's radio station. What we're exploring now is a way that we could in volume purchase transistor radios for our seniors at a discount or hopefully we could get it subsidized. And the goal would be that we would pre-record up to 1,000 messages. And then we also would be have the capacity, once the transmitter is installed and the antenna is erected, to simultaneously on a moment's notice, record a new message or multiple messages. So it just gives us more tools to get our messages out. And if we have a power outage or we have a severe weather event, it's another way to get information to the public. And we have a ten-year license at 1630 on the AM dial. And we're looking for this, Jackie.
Are there any questions or comments?
Welcome to sports.
All right, ordinances for hearing.
Okay. The ordinances scheduled for hearing were introduced by title and passed on the first reading in the regular meeting of the council held on June 24, 2013. All were posted and filed according to law and copies were made available to members of the general public.
I call up ordinances for second reading and ask the clerk to read said ordinance by title.
Ordinance 28, 2013, ordinance of the borough of Madison appropriating $100,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for remediation and safety improvements to Bailey Ellard Fields.
Okay, I will be opening this hearing in just a second. But to, for the public, this ordinance will be withdrawn because it's being replaced by an updated ordinance with funding from a different source. So with that, does anyone want to comment on this ordinance? Seeing none, I close the hearing. So we have to move second and which, or just a move to withdraw.
No, there's no, or if there's no one moves it, it does.
Nobody moves it.
I'll move it. Mayor, I'll make a motion to withdraw ordinance 28, 2013 appropriating money from the General Capital Fund.
So you have a motion to withdraw?
Second.
For the discussion, roll call vote.
Mr. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 28, 2013 withdrawn and ask the clerk to publish notice and retire the number. Ordinance 29-2013.
Ordinance of the borough of Madison appropriating $10,250 from the Fire Department Trust Fund for replacement of fire hoses.
I open the hearing for ordinance 29, 2013. For anyone wishing to comment on this ordinance. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 29-2013.
I second that. Council discussion, roll call vote.
Mr. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 29, 2013, adopted and finally passed and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in a newspaper and file the ordinance accordance with the law.
Ordinance 30, 2013, ordinance of the borough of Madison appropriating $8,000 from the Fire Department Trust Fund to purchase new self-contained breathing apparatus face pieces.
I open the hearing on ordinance 30, 2013. Anyone wishing to comment, please step to lectern. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 30-2013.
I second it. Council discussion, roll call vote.
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 30, 2013, adopted and finally passed and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in newspaper and file the ordinance accordance with the law. And now we are on to invitation for discussion number three of three. And this is the one when you may comment on anything, but still keep your comments to three minutes or less. State your name and your address and write the same.
I just have one question, actually, it was about the ordinance just withdrew and the next one you're going to introduce. Why is the money being shifted back to the Open Space Fund?
The $100,000 that was appropriated was the $100,000 that was received at closing from the diocese to go towards the remediation. And the reason we did it separately was that we were, at that point, what the CFO, CFO had told us that it had gone into the General Capital. But upon further investigation and confirmation, that it had actually gone to the open space. So the $100,000 went in. We wanted to take it out of there to use it for its purpose.
Okay. Because the night that Mr. Landrigan made his presentation, it was pretty clear in the presentation that's where the money was. But you guys had actually broken it up. And I asked the question, and Mr. Calhoun, not here anymore, but at the time he stood up and certified that that's where the money was, it's kind of concerning that at that point, he didn't really know where the money should be.
And we have addressed that, yes.
Thank you.
Any other, anyone else in the public wishing to comment? Don, Sam, if you hesitate too long, I could just close it out on you, you know?
Don Brunner, Troy Revan Drive. Speaking for my mom, she was concerned about the recycling trucks not having a backup beeper. They go down Revan Drive and we have maybe 10 or 14 youngsters living on our side of the street. And there's not a backup beeper. Just wondered whether this has been looked into or...
I know you reported that before.
Meeting tomorrow at 3:00.
Okay. So we have a meeting tomorrow with them. I apologize that it's still ongoing. It certainly would be a safety issue just on a, I'm concerned just whether alarm or not of trucks that back up to collect garbage. I wish they would not do that. But we will, since we're working, working with the vendor, we will deal with it directly.
Specifically the paper recyclable truck.
Yep. So, thank you. And we apologize for the fact that that issue is still hanging out there. Anyone else wishing to, oh, too late. No, Sam, please.
Sam Cerciolo, Park Avenue, Madison. I'm going to give my report, Bob. The New Jersey Transit, the Elm Street is open.
Thank you. It looks great.
They power washed the walls. They did a tremendous job. So we make things happen. Also, the post office, they painted it. And I understand they're going to put new windows. So we do make things happen. We're a hell of a team, Bob. Also, the house on Park Avenue, cut the grass, trimmed all the hedges. So things do happen. Now, on the other side, the Gumbuster, the kid is doing a good job. But, you know, I think he makes like $12 an hour. You got to give him some overtime or something because he can't catch up with it. I mean, the Lincoln Place, and he'll do what he did the west side of Main Street. Now he's going to, it's all, so maybe we ought to, maybe, like I said, give him a little overtime because it's a mess. When you walk up and down the streets, especially Lincoln Place. The pavers, I don't know if we checked on pavers. Where I told you, there's about 40, 45 pavers that are busted, right? Brand new thing on Lincoln Place. Check that out. That hasn't been taken care of. You know, it was unfortunate about three weeks ago, and this is my recommendation. The water main on in front of Whole Foods, well, first of all, that's a state highway. I know that. And they just did it not even, what, a year or so ago? And Park and Main and the highway, 24 is like a sheet of glass. And it's a shame. And I guess we're responsible for that water main. But I strongly recommend that we don't try to fix it. When I say we, our borough guys. Talking to guys in the business, maybe we want to get the guy to put the road down. You got to dig down 18 inches. You got to do maybe a strip of maybe 60, 70, 80 feet. Because to do it right, you got to do it in layers. You got to come back. The rest is never going to be right. And that whole, that whole street is beautiful. But if you ride up and down now, it's like a roller coaster. So again, I strongly recommend that you get the pros to do that. Also, you know, I'm all over town, but you, council people, and you, Mayor, and you, Ray, too. Jimmy, look at the, the front entrance coming in here. If you don't redo those control joints, it's going to be, for the winter, it's going to be a real disaster next, next year, especially if you get a bad winter. All those control joints are loose. They need to be recalled. And if you don't do it, you're going to cost you more money to fix it next time. So again, you can take a look at it when you walk in and out. They're real bad shape, the steps and the landings. Also, is there still a construction committee? Or did you change that to a street committee?
There, two, there's a complete streets committee that's separate from the construction committee.
Does the construction committee meet?
Rob is a liaison. I don't know if it's met recently.
Because that was my idea.
We've met once this year. We have another one hopefully planned for August, depending on vacations, certainly in September.
Okay. Thank you.
Because that was my idea a couple of years ago. And I wanted to be on the committee. I thought I was a co-chair. But they don't want me on that construction committee. Can I get on the street committee? I would appreciate it because I, you know, I'm being a street guy. I'd be good on the street committee. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, liaison. Anyone else wishing to be heard?
Hello, I'm Mary Murphy. I know the gentleman before me said he likes to be last. So I guess I'm standing here at your spot. I just have a question about the tax reassessment. I had seen the frequently asked questions. I had caught it on patch. But between now and January, when we are able to file appeals, what do we do in the interim? We just go along, obviously paying whatever that bill will come when it's not an estimate? Is that...
Yeah, I would say there's a couple of steps. One, step one is to get a better understanding of how yours was calculated. The accuracy has been very good, but I would say it's not been 100%. That there was one card that was mismarked and what should have been a cover deck came into a enclosed addition to the home. And so that, that home's calculations were wrong. So you want to get a good feel for whether your property card is correct. And then that gives you, you know, what angle you take. Was it done wrong? And then you can start work, get a better idea of how neighbors are assessed. And as we mentioned, the staff is online. So you can, are available. So you can make an appointment and they will sit down and step you through the whole process. Just to give you a little background on, my wife and I own two properties in Madison. And a two-family, I saw the assessment and I said, that, that's way out of line. I then went online where it had all the properties listed. This was not the detail, but just the, all the properties and the various assessments. I was able to look at the neighboring homes. I said, well, number four is a little bit smaller and that's valued a little bit less. And number eight on the other side of me is more. And so my property assessment seemed in line. So you get a good feel of how you compare with similar properties. Ray, anything else you would add to recommend?
I'm glad to set up an appointment. Have you met the assessor?
No, I had placed a phone call or two. So hopefully, we'll go from there.
After the meeting goes, I'll get your contact info and she'll call you in the morning and we'll set something up that's convenient. We'll go through your property record card, your history, and give you a set of forms for next year, and then discuss what limited options we have between now and the end of the year.
And you had mentioned earlier that about a third, went up a third, went down a third.
Approximately.
Had about a modest change. What do you consider a modest, modest change?
Well, we actually have a chart showing the percentage increases from all the categories. So I'll be glad to share that with you after the meeting. But it shows percentage wise what people went up. This is actually the entire, this is every property in the town that shows their assessed valuation, their address, the homeowner, and we're going to make this available.
So while that seems very expensive, is there like a visual map or anything of the neighborhoods that have appreciated more and which ones do you pre?
Well, we've done an analysis of every street in town to see what the average increase. And we can talk about your particular street. I see it offline. But on average, basically the average home in Madison went up approximately 63% in terms of the assessed valuation. So if you were there or under, your taxes went down. If you were close to that or right about there, you were flat. If you were above that, then you had a tax increase. The shift in town was not from commercial to residential. It was more from the residential properties to the apartment complexes. There was a significant increase in their property assessments, far in excess of the commercial market or the residential. And looking at the residential market, the moderate priced homes seem to have a greater appreciation from the prior 13-year assessment to now because they're in demand in Madison. If you try to buy a house for $500,000 or less, it's, there's full price offers, multiple full price offers. The higher-end homes seem to be a little softer in terms of the appreciation value of those homes.
of those homes. That's just a snapshot. And we will go through the particulars for your street, show you all of the assessments on your street and comparable homes, so you get a feel for, hopefully that you're being treated similarly to other properties that are close to yours.
I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, we'll do that.
Thank you for coming tonight, and, uh, anyone else wishing to be heard? Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting, and we move on to introduction of ordinances.
Ordinance is scheduled for first reading, have a hearing date set for August twelfth, two thousand thirteen. All will be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board, and made available to members of the public requesting copies.
I call up ordinances for first reading and ask the borough clerk to read said ordinances by title.
Ordinance thirty-one, two thousand thirteen, ordinance of the borough of Madison amending ordinance twenty-six, two thousand thirteen, appropriating two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the municipal open space trust fund for remediation and safety improvements to increase the appropriation for the Bailey Ellard fields from two hundred and fifty thousand to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Mayor, I move that ordinance?
Second.
Counsel discussion. Rob?
Thank you. When we last discussed this, uh, about a month ago, I think, this will be, this counts as the first reading, it's not second reading?
Correct.
Because we're changing it.
This is the first read.
This is the first read for this one. The, the two hundred and fifty thousand was already, um, the ordinance twenty-six dash twenty thirteen did have a second reading.
And it's done.
And it's done, yeah.
Okay, so I guess I have a couple of questions. In, in the month that's gone by, have we gone out, have we gotten it better? As I recall, we really didn't, hadn't gotten firm bids on any of the work we've done in the past month. Have we, have we done that?
No, nothing's gone out for bid yet, no.
Okay, so I wonder then, um, and, and just to correct, just so I understand well, the work we're talking about is remediation of the contamination, it's not gonna address the playing fields, right?
That's correct.
And I wonder, uh, have we thought about reviewing the master recreation plan? As I understand it, the last time that was done, it was prior to either turf field being installed in Madison. We did it before the high school was turfed, we did it before these two fields were turfed, and I wonder, have we spoken to the Board of Ed regarding any plans they may have for artificial surface fields, uh, post the sale of GVR, prior to us, uh, spending money on it? I mean, I'm a big supporter of recreation, and I believe that we should do it right, and since we haven't even gone out to cost anything yet, um, you know, just kind of appropriating money, uh, we all, we all for, I fully support what Bob wants to do. I fully support spending as much money as, uh, we think is necessary for the safety of our children, and to add to the recreation capacity if in fact we need it. But I'm just wondering, absent any sort of pricing on our half, you know, three fifty, as I recall from the first construction review committee meeting, when I asked the borough engineer, why three fifty, his answer was, well, it's always been three fifty. Um, so I just, I'm wondering, have, is the work done? Are we thinking about redoing the plan? Do we have a longer-term plan for this? Cause let's do it right the first time. Um, what else?
And, and a couple of quick ones, and then, Bob, if you could fill in anything. It's, um, I know the Recreation Committee is working on, uh, updating that, that master plan. The, um, certainly one of the goals that came out of the previous one is, even with the investment in, uh, turf fields, which has certainly made a, a big positive thing, that the, the sports boom has not leveled off quite yet, um, and we, we will be losing the Green Village Road School Fields, otherwise we wouldn't, the Board of Ed wouldn't have the money to build a new field, so we will lose those. Um, and one of the big recommendations, as we know, and one of the challenges about North Jersey is being able to rest grass fields, and so it would be great if we get to the point where we can actually rotate fields and, uh, rest them and provide, um, the best possible facilities. Bob, anything else you...
Yeah, in regards to the, uh, Field Master Plan, what I did is, I have an actual copy of it, and I drove around to each field and looked at them. And what's actually happened since it was done is the existing grass fields have become worse. Uh, the condition has gone way down. I'm not, I can't speak to the Board of Ed in terms of what they wanna do with their fields. Um, what I will say is, you know, they have other obligations. The other part of it is, in regards to Bailey Ellard, that field, the remediation, as I said in my presentation, needs to be done. It's an open site on the DEP, uh, checklist, so we're going to have to do it sooner rather than later. Um, the mayor did mention GVR, but what I'll also mention is this, and I kind of call the Bailey El, Ellard Fields a model that I'd like to follow because they follow the MRC in the sense that they're a self-contained field with parking. Um, many of the high school fields, uh, well, I'm not gonna talk about the high school field, like the junior school fields and the grammar school fields, you have street parking there, and that's really not, I don't think, a good model to follow. Uh, these fields give you the flexibility, it's solving a, uh, DEP mandate that needs to be done. And as far as the costs go, uh, Bob Vogel, Danny Boccolo, uh, Mayor, uh, Ray Cody, Jim Burnett and I have been going over the details for over a year now. Since, remember I showed it to you about a year ago? Yeah, absolutely. And we've poured over them a number of times, we looked at a number of options, uh, detailed drawings have been done, and Bob Vogel normally comes out pretty darned close to what it should be. So I'm very comfortable with his numbers. Um, and I'm comfortable with what we're asking for, and I'm also hopeful that it may come in less.
Yeah, and...
I'll invite you, if it's okay, I'd like to invite Bob to the next construction review committee meeting. I know that we spoke about it last time, and, uh, just, I think it's good that you're there.
Okay, sounds like a good plan, and, and just as with every other project that the, um, there's design work done, engineer prices it, then we can't get bids until the, it, the money is appropriated through an ordinance, so we won't have a solid bid until this chapter is closed on it. Any other discussion, question? Jeanie?
Did I remember correctly that at some point, perhaps it was the beginning of this year, at some point, that the account balance for the open space trust fund dipped under a hundred thousand? No?
No, we have a million two sixty-seven for green acres at a minimum, plus we, it's probably not reflecting current year proceeds. We don't normally record the open space revenue, and this year it'd be in excess of six hundred and eight thousand dollars, so the, the balance could be understated, but, but there's still the obligation, the treasurer or the, the tax collector does not remit the money and move it from account A that we collect through the taxes.
That's why it was under a hundred?
So that may be why, but we're, we've never been under seven hundred thousand, and then when you add in the green acres money, the million two sixty-seven that we're gonna pay down in the bond issue, there, there's probably a balance of two million dollars. I think Austria's report was a million nine at the list.
But, but the, you know, the, the green acres money will go toward, so, but, but we, we verified the, the balance, there's balance to cover this.
You know, we have the money to cover it. We've got the whole twenty thirteen collection.
No, 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 that's what I'm not, that's not, sorry, that's not what I'm asking. What I'm asking is, since we have not seen the ledger for open space trust fund, you know, I'm going back to asking the question, you know, how, how come we didn't know that one hundred thousand was deposited into open space, right?
As I said, that, that has, that has been done, dealt with appropriately as...
That's a very scary thought, that we didn't know where money went.
Actually, I, I wanna congratulate this council because we passed the ordinance that Ben recommended to give quarterly reports, um, be, because in the past, there has been no accounting. Um, I asked for accounting of what had been spent the two years that I was off council from open space. I don't think that was ever told to any of you, what was actually, um...
Welcome to the club, yeah, a bunch of us have asked.
So, I mean, well, that's...
That's what we're constantly asking for.
Well, you were spending it, you, because you were approving this expenditure funds from that fund to, to, to create the turf field project. That was clear what was being done. I'm totally transparent. That's why I gave the oral report when Pat Rowe asked last time. I'm sorry I didn't bring my numbers, and the reason why I'm not ready to report is because I had a vacation, and I wanted to verify the numbers before I come to you, and Ben wants, uh, the, the reporting to occur in September. He thinks that's a better timeframe to do this, but...
So we've, we've put steps into place so we can clarify, clarify it. Despite this embarrassment of the hundred thousand dollars, there was a confusion, we, we know that the money is there to, to support this project, and along with all the other commitments we've made.
Yeah, and I have a second question, is if you, um, re-ordinance thirty-one, the first, we asked paragraph over there, it did talk about to improve fields. So Councilman Catalinello just asked a question that, um, um, asked a question to, um, Councilman, um, Landrigan, that this is not for improving the fields, this is for the remediation and making safety improvements, if I remember correctly, for the parking lot, right? So, uh...
I'll go back to what I said at the prior meeting, when you asked the question, are you gonna do anything to the grass fields? I said, no.
Right.
The hope was that there might be some money left at the end of the project, and, uh, Bob Vogel estimated it to be twenty-five thousand dollars. If there is, we might do something to refurbish the field, but right now, this is strictly to cap a portion of the remediation, uh, rather, a portion of the affected field, to put in the access road out to Danforth, and that's it.
Yep, so would it be more accurate to remove those wordings to improve the field?
I, I would say, wait, no, actually, I, I think in, um, Matt, you can, let me know, but I, I think when you talk about improving fields, it is all the support that goes to the fact that remediation has to be done, it has to be capped, that's part of improving the fields. Making sure there's parking for the people that use the fields is part of improving the field, so I, I think it's fine the way it's written and doesn't need to be, uh, changed.
The other, the other thing I would suggest is that if there's a little bit left over at the end, and you wanna do something to, you know, uh, re-seed the grass or whatever, you've now passed an ordinance to recover that. I think if you don't have that in there, you have extra funds, you could then be stuck and have to have another ordinance to then allocate additional funds. So I'd recommend that you keep it this way, gives you guys a little bit more flexibility should there be additional funds at the end.
Okay.
Right, any other discussion?
I just, again, on the, on the, on the plan, I think it's important that we redo this, um, you know, we've just heard arguments about how the open space was gonna, there's a lot of demands on it, and I think it's important that we work with our partners at the BOE to understand what their goals are and what their plans are, because I think it's pretty clear that the addition of turf has allowed us, both at the, the high school field, Monica Field, and at the, at the Recreation Center, um, has allowed us to really accommodate this explosion in youth sports, and without it, I don't know how we would have done it. Um, now, if, if, you know, so if we better understand what the, you know, in the spirit of shared services, if, if we understand better what the plans are, uh, we can, you know, we can make a real decision on, on, on what exactly we wanna do to Bailey Ellard. You either blow it out, make it a beautiful place, or potentially just, you know, just leave it alone. Either way, it has to be remediated, no one's arguing that. Um, just wanna make sure that the money we spend, we spend judiciously and get the best value for it, obviously.
Yeah, um, when I vetted this at the rec committee, the Board of Ed was represented there, so they know what's going on, so this isn't being done in a vacuum.
It is not.
Right. And as far as what you can physically do there, there aren't a whole lot of choices. I mean, right now, the, the project literally is remove fences, put in a parking lot, and put in an access road. Beyond that, it's just reseeding and maybe putting in stands and a bathroom, but that is something which we're calling phase two, because during the presentation, as I outlined, this is a phased-in project, and if money becomes available, and if it's needed, those other pieces will be done. Right now, it's just serve an immediate need.
Jeanie?
Um, since this is the first reading, would it be possible that the next time we can hear, we have Bob Vogel verify that three hundred and fifty is gonna be sufficient for us to do it right the first time?
These are his numbers.
Yeah, so, but we, we can make that available, so it's, I, I think it was already shared in Bob's report, but, uh, we can...
Yeah, I'll give it out here. I'll send it to the report.
All right.
And we are just encumbering the money. We're encumbering the hundred thousand dollars that was made, given back to us by the diocese to address remediation.
Correct. Roll call vote?
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ordinance thirty-two, two thousand thirteen, ordinance of the borough of Madison amending chapter thirty-four of the Borough Code entitled Police Department to reorganize the composition of the police department.
I move ordinance thirty-two dash twenty thirteen.
Mayor, I second that. Discussion? Roll call vote?
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Port, yep.
Ordinance thirty-three, two thousand thirteen, ordinance of the borough of Madison appropriating eight thousand dollars from the municipal open space trun, trust fund for repairs to the Cole Park Fountain.
Mayor, I move ordinance thirty-three dash twenty thirteen.
I second that. Any further discussion? Roll call vote?
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yep.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance thirty-four, two thousand thirteen, ordinance of the borough of Madison appropriating a hundred thousand dollars from the General Capital Improvement Fund for repair of the East Street parking lot.
Mayor, so move?
Second.
Counsel discussion?
We're, we're allowed to discuss.
Yeah, yeah. Roll call vote?
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Great, consent agenda resolutions.
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion, discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
Mayor?
Just note that R two thirty dash two thousand thirteen is being removed from the consent agenda until next meeting.
Thank you.
I move resolution two twenty-three dash two thousand thirteen through R two twenty-nine dash two thousand thirteen, and R two thirty-one dash two thousand thirteen.
Second.
Discussion, or any that need to be pulled? Seeing none, roll call vote?
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
So unfinished business, approval of vouchers, and this is two meetings worth, so don't wane, pan.
Yes. Public safety, seventy thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars, seventy-two cents. Health and public assistance, six thousand two hundred and seventy-four dollars, ninety-two cents. Public works and engineering, three hundred and sixty-four thousand nine hundred and five dollars and eighty-four cents. Community affairs, twenty thousand five hundred and eighty-six dollars, twenty-seven cents.[1700.62]